Call the meeting to order. Some announcements before we get started. Kentucky Regional School District is having their annual State of the Schools. Meeting next Tuesday, November eighteenth at six P M. Do you know if there's a remote option?
There is not a remote option. You got confirmation. It is being recorded. Yeah.
Okay, great. And so that's in the cafeteria as you walk in, correct?
Uh. Honestly, I didn't, what does it say? I didn't notice the room.
Location.
Two, uh, two, I think it's the library, the tent, one on the second floor.
Yeah. Sage Center, November, December newsletters now available. That's in the packet as well as on the. See here's our website. They also have a food pantry wish list. Really important for the upcoming holidays. And the annual holiday tree lighting will be Wednesday, December third at six thirty P M on the training field. And finally, call the volunteers. There's a complete list of current openings on the town webpage on the volunteer tab. Any special openings you guys want to call attention to that you're aware of? No conservation commission is still down, person?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Item A is public comment. Anybody here wishing to make a comment? Or none? We'll move on to item B, town manager updates.
I put together a brief memo in the packet. Really, this is as much as kind of a checklist for us and for staff just to kind of keep everyone on the same page. So I think it's a useful format that we can do going forward. We always do some version of this. We don't always present it to the board, but I thought it'd be helpful, especially where there are some issues with some follow up that is kind of, you know, involves some policy direction or clarification. But let me just look through this, see if there's anything that's really worth discussing. The paid school, you know, we obviously it's going to be great. Now we've got the funding, we can formally engage P and out. Matt Derovic today with the Kentucky Finance Team on the statement of interest and having that architectural resource is going to be a huge help to meet the timeline that we'll be on. Library facility planning, Caitlin's in touch with Corinne to basically take the draft RFQ that was put together. The scope is all done, but put together the more, the process and she's working with Corinne and a list of prospective vendors. She actually sent that back today, so we've got a good list of designers who have expertise in public libraries.
And so Angus, when is the like overall schedule? I think we had said it would be the first time of next year.
Yeah, well, the goal, I think, is to get the RFQ issued potentially by the end of this month. Caitlin, I think in her email said like early December. But I think it's pretty much, it's pretty much there. It's just writing up is exactly the question you asked. What's going to be the timeline? How much time are we going to give vendors to respond? She had said, and Caitlin had suggested, you know, three to three and a half weeks is good to give people time to to focus on it. So let's say proposals were due sometime before the holidays, you know, maybe the third week of December. By the time those have been vetted, you know, we're probably, you know, at least in the first week of January and then interviews, so.
So it could be March.
Yeah, well, I would, you know, I think it's realistic to have a contract in place in February, you know. Probably not before that.
Yeah.
It's possible it could move quicker, but as you know, there's, you know, seven, seven people involved with the advisory group. Along with Caitlin, so just the logistics of that is, is going to be a challenge, especially around the holidays. Actually, I noticed Corinne's on here, so. Corinne, I don't know if you heard the discussion we were just having, but we were, I was just briefing the board on some follow up items from town meeting and obviously the passage of the funding of the library study. You know, I was just saying that, you know, Caitlin's in touch with you on the, the process and I think it's, you know, if we had someone under contract by around the first of February, I think that would be pretty successful. And that would allow them to, I would meet the timeline that was set out by having a report by September.
Yeah. I, we just started mindful because we have several studies, like we don't want to be doing them all at once, so to the extent we can kind of block them out over the next six months, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah. Invasives, we've, that's we are, there is some kind of spot work that we're looking at getting done. But that's something that is going to be, which is oversight and what he and I have talked about consistently, including run up to town meetings, that that was never envisioned as like off contract of vendor. It's the vendor we've worked with who's done a nice job and I think will continue to do some amount of work for us is no longer in this geographic region. He's only here sometimes because when, when they were selected for the work, they were based in Newbury, but he's now based out in Western Mass. So he's only here sometimes, so which is going to be working to cultivate some relationships with somewhere regionally based invasives. Of, you know, herbicide advocates, so it's great to have that resource because there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done. But I do think Ronnie Haller, the vendor to this point, can be helpful to us in, in some targeted situations and also with helping us continue to advance a process of like a real strategy on this. So, so let's go. MBTA bylaw, Amanda's been working with the town planner to get all the form seven.
Not MBTA, major court. But, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the form seven, so, and that also has to be approved by HLC, that was the HE and the HLC. No reason to think that won't happen, but.
Is that sequential or?
I'm not sure if it's in parallel or if it goes to HLC first. I know, I know the two offices have been working closely throughout this MBTA process. I've never dealt with a, you know, with this policy before, so I do know that HE's office has been looking to HLC to essentially, you know, approve that the form of bylaw is, is, you know, meets the requirements. And as you know, HLC did, did pre-approve or pre-endorse the the bylaw here in West Newbury, so I don't expect that to be any kind of significant process, but it's not over till it's over. We will need to talk further, I assume, at a, at a future meeting unless you want to get into it tonight on this spectacle event permanent, but I think that, that warrants a kind of a reset of just how, how we're going to move forward.
This is fail, it didn't fail, there was no action.
Oh, right. Okay, good, good. Thanks.
Yeah, I think we should just continue on how we've been doing it until.
But in terms of the updated forms and just getting those, you know, endorsed so that we can get those in circulation. And, yeah, the bylaw amendments, those that go to the HE as well. And the fee setting, that's also something that we have research on, going to basically document all the fees and the you know, when and how they've been set. And I think we'll bring that to a, probably maybe the next meeting. Just to kind of, just to report on what, what they are and and the street acceptance, yeah, that's one that Amanda's worked on, planner as well on that. That seems very straightforward.
Can I add some comments under this topic because in town meeting was curious because at least I was both pleased and bothered by a lot of things, so I, I got a lot of notes I tried to.
Sure, yeah, of course.
So obviously the good news, I think, was MBTA passed, because that's a big weight off. Relative to the MBTA, the highlight of my evening was one of Wendy's comments. And it's when she was giving her wrap up on, she said, that's like, not a verbatim quote, but what I took from it. That's how good government works, by listening, collaborating and finding common ground. And I, I think that both we as select board and other committees, if they would listen to that and follow that a little more, it might make a lot of processes run better. You know, by hearing about turf wars and people battling and everything else, you know, we are trying to do good for everybody. That was a I love that statement anyways. I think we did a lot of things poorly and one of them was a lot of the articles we just read, seconded, fin common vote. I think whoever's going to request an article be put on has to be, in the future, has to be prepared to speak to it afterwards and then further be willing to answer questions. And yes, sometimes even absurd questions. There were questions asked and just let to go float and that was very it wasn't good.
Well, I mean, some of those questions were not acknowledged by the moderator, so like.
Well, then we have to, the, the sponsor of the article has to be prepared to answer those. And there is one of my comments later on about when Benny got up and he asked a question. And in fairness, it was a bit of a rambling question, but it was a legitimate question. And not for her to solicit an answer, I found that incredibly disrespectful to all the members of town meeting, not just him. So I gave it my best shot as an answer and I hope it helped him. But we have to do better with that, too.
Seems like we used to make the motion and then whoever made the motion would follow up with an explanation or.
So I think. I think next time when we start assigning these, we have to say, okay, Wendy, Chris Ross, or maybe with the events department, maybe Amanda, I know she's not a resident, but she can also speak to it. We have to be prepared to have a plan on everyone as to who's going to pick. If it's not worthy of you addressing at a town meeting, don't bring it before us to be on the warrant. It's pretty I, I just found that sloppy and disrespectful to the residents. And it's partly on me, you know, we all could have done better on that, I think. The curious one, Fred did great on the library one. That's the way should be. He got up, he gave a nice clean, crisp presentation, answered questions. Kudos to Fred on that one. Again, I was very disappointed with the church and prostate water issue. I made my statement, only one person got up and just asked about the liability of engineers. And I think that voters for asleep at the wheel, if you can dismiss a hundred and sixty one thousand dollar issue like that without any questions.
Well, there were two questions though, but they didn't stand up and ask them. They were just like in the audience, so.
Yeah, again.
You gotta make the effort to stand up and ask the question.
Well, the one that I did, he got up and he asked.
Right, yeah.
Again, I would have thought, you know, if I was a water reviews or I'd have been all over that.
Yeah.
So anyways. And the most, I don't say disturbed, I guess it was the most disturbing, the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar transfer of free cash to offset. If I am not mistaken, that covers the Ash Street property. The FinCon rationale didn't say anything on that. Nor did it get any mention at town meeting on that. And to me, as a, knowing that background, that story and not having explained that to the voters, it seems a little murky at best.
You mean because it could have been much higher? It could have been four hundred thousand or something, the free cash transfer?
No, it makes the Ash Street deal look like it was done in the dark of night.
Oh.
You know, do you have any resident, do you know about the Ash Street property?
Nice.
Because I'm on the podium.
Okay.
And it is a fascinating story, the history of West Newbury.
It is, but I don't want the residents to think that we pulled the wool over their eyes and just flipped it in an article and buried it.
So I think we should have given a report on that as part of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot of money to not have addressed appropriately, I guess, yeah, so.
It must be reported on in public meetings.
Yeah, but this was town meeting where it should have been.
I understand, but the two seventy wasn't all that different from what's the typical amount.
Right, which is why it makes it a little more troubling because you were able to, it was able to be put in there. I'm just thinking as a taxpayer, if I hadn't known the backstory and anybody watching it saw a hundred percent legit, there's a story. But people could question that legitimately and say, oh, how did that happen? So.
So that, is that public now?
Oh, yeah.
It's been public for a while.
Sunday conference that challenges.
Yeah, we have discussed it. We've explained the whole thing a couple of times.
Yeah, it's a court, court approved settlement. Yeah, so it's all public.
I was at the understanding the FinCon was going to write a narrative on that in there and I didn't see it, so. Another comment, and this was sort of frustrating to me because I don't catch heat for it, but it goes, Casey was at the meeting before telling us we need to let the residents have more input on the meeting. And then she was shutting them down, so you can't have it both ways. That was my question to her at the beginning. Wouldn't want to get up and ask a question when you've been told to be quiet and sit down and didn't get an answer, and so. I was frustrated with that whole dynamic. Just another quick one, major boy drive, needed a more, I would say, robust presentation. It almost got upset a little bit because people didn't understand. This is a traditional appropriate process for subdivision rooms. It shouldn't have been questioned. It should have been, that presentation should have been strong and very straightforward at that point to explain in this small one. And another issue, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. Rick was asking about the trailers, but that had nothing to do with the article. I thought I would have thought that was out of order, but I don't know. And, you know, the frustration was the whole issue of the motion versus reading of the article and then the motion. I, I thought we'd gotten past that. That's what it was going to be in there.
So did I, but Casey told me at the beginning, no, you have to do it every town meeting. Do you recall Angus? I thought.
I believe that is correct. There's got to be a motion for waves or reading of the article for that every town meeting, yeah.
I don't know that in the future, just the redundancy and confusion is unfortunate. That'd be good, that'd be good, the general gist, I guess.
So I think we need to insist that whether we make the motion or somebody else, that they provide an explanation. That should be the first after the motion, so that people understand what they're voting on.
Yeah, and also be prepared to answer questions. Don't just present the motion.
Well, part of that is on the moderator to make sure that questions are raised and that, you know.
But if the moderator doesn't, I think what was presented, the article or the select board, if we're involved with it should be prepared to stand up and answer if the moderator doesn't look for answer. I mean, I agree with those both ways, but
Yeah.
I felt like I personally could have done better on some of that, so.
Yeah, I, I guess in addition to that, my only thought is the setup, having the select word in front of the moderator. It was so challenging to try to turn around, like usually you can make eye contact and she can nod if you're going to make a motion, but I did not like that setup at all. If we're going to be down the floor, at least if we could be on the side so we can see her without having to turn around and receive. Especially with the microphone, they make sure and it's just, I found challenging. But that's a logistical issue, not a substantive issue when you were talking. Ross, any feedback from you?
Nope, but I agree with how your observations, particularly with like the inconsistencies with the participation and the questions and some getting answered, are people have been ushered back to their seat, verbally, so. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry to barge in on your.
No, 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 sorry.
All right, I was going to have that as an agenda item, but I just thought you were going to have it as a. Yeah. Okay. All right, so we're on to Whittier.
Yeah, I, I just, I guess one brief thing, I, I always wonder when there is something said that is, you know, incorrect, what's the proper, right, quantity to let go, but you mentioned, you know, Benny's comment. And I think imperative within that, correct if I'm wrong, but I, I seem to remember he said something something suggesting the amount of money that had been spent on sold due sailors, which was an incorrect amount by order of magnitude. And, and I heard it, I'm like, I just, I didn't think like people like it was, it was kind of an offhand embedded, but it was, it was.
That was a different part of the conversation too, where I would have caught, yeah.
Yeah, but it was just like.
Like two million dollars when.
Correct.
Three hundred or something.
No, no, it was less than two hundred. It was like one twenty five, but when I log was appropriated.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was stabilization work. I think when you put the.
No, I know, because I ran the accounting. It's under one fifty, I'm, I'm certain of that. Because the rest laps back and the borrowing authorization was never used, but the point is there's a true number. It was not material for the discussion, so it was kind of, it would have felt awkward to like jump in and say, hey.
No, I don't. I just appreciate.
Start addressing.
Well, but, but the fact is I ran these numbers because we were pressed on it a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And I actually ran the numbers and I presented to the collector at the time, the actual number. My recollection was that it was on the order of one twenty five. It might have been one forty, but it was not two hundred. And I obviously didn't have that data in front of me at town meeting, so I'm not going to just like put that out there, but, but I know it. So, you know, for it to be said, well, we spent two million dollars, like, that is just so incorrect.
And I think we have to correct that. I just.
Yeah.
Model, point of order.
Even if it's not related to the topic, I don't think we can let, you know, everyone use statement stand because.
That's what's on MBTA the first time around.
Exactly, yeah.
To let that go on, again, would be negligent. If I'd have, I didn't, I heard that at the time and I flinched. Good thing I didn't answer because I thought the number was like three eighties, but I.
No, no, no. One point five was appropriated. Of that, two fifty was cash, one point two five was borrowing authorization. The money that was spent was spent on, you know, the architectural, the site plan review, the concom review, the preparation of bid docs, the preparation of all the building specs. There was a lot of work that was done. It was on the order. It was between one twenty five and one forty. I do have it.
Depends on that sum of money, but wasn't there money done earlier? Was it before to stabilize the building?
No, that was done before my time.
Right, okay. Somebody, oh, another point, it's like three hundred fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah, I think if you add those together, because I think that was like ninety nine thousand.
Because they had no.
Your, your, it's okay, we, we, we agree.
But I think what we can send there to say is the order of magnitude is not correct. The number is more like under a half a million.
Yeah.
You don't have to hit with a hard number.
Correct.
You just say, let's get, let's get close to appropriate.
Yeah.
Like he did say, two and a half million dollars, you wouldn't lose the funding.
And it was not.
And I said six hundred thousand. I did correct that, that.
Yeah, yeah.
The question, so.
Correct, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I think my only other observation is just the level of hostility and suspicion, like, you know, with the social event thing and the fees, I grew, trying to pull something over and I just found that really distressing. And I imagine people in the audience who didn't typically subscribe to that view also helped me to mitigate.
That's why I like your comment.
Yeah.
Listen, collaborate, find common ground, yeah, that's it.
It's interesting how quickly voters can make up their mind on how little and offhand information. You know, I mean, read some of the column, I'm going to vote against it. And it's just like, I mean, I guess that's probably just the way of the world, you know, so. Minds can get made up quickly.
All right.
Right. Good. Next update, Whittier Tech. Chris and I were both meeting yesterday morning. Now, of course, what you thought, but, you know, nothing unexpected out of it. Basically, it seems the focus right now is to get this regional agreement advisory committee up and running. We and several other communities have provided our nominees. But there's still whatever communities who haven't, so Maureen is, you know, pressing for everyone to get those names so that those can, those appointments can be made at the next meeting of the school committee. That will then create a new public body, which will then, you know, start to meet and organize and set agendas and minutes and all of that, so. That's going to, that's something that whether we play a smaller role or a larger role, we're certainly going to be active participants in that in any scenario, so that's something that's going to continue to be, you know, I, what, what was discussed at the meeting yesterday was to continue to have these more amorphous working group meetings roughly quarterly, but later in the meeting, it kind of seemed like it might be more than that.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
A monthly to do the right rewrite of the agreement, so.
Well, but that's the regional agreement advisory committee. I'm certain it's going to be meeting monthly.
Oh, I didn't like the idea of this level of people together to get information about Whittier in general.
Exactly, yeah. So I think, I think it's going to become the normal to have a monthly RAC meeting, a quarterly or more working group meeting, and this RAC, I'm quite certain, is going to have multiple subcommittees. So it's just something we, you know, you, there's nothing you guys don't know, but the community, I think, just needs to understand that, you know, we're doing a lot. And that's not letting up, it's, it's ramping up, so. That is going to become part of the baseline workload and that, needless to say, further compresses our time, so.
So is the plan for both of you to continue to go or just the person that has voted?
Well, so we're both, you kind of, going to be designated to the RAC, that'll be an appointment of the school committee. I would assume we would both be attending those meetings. I, I think it would be.
That was one was an alternate.
Yeah, there's a voting member and a backup, but like if, if we're not voted there at all the meetings, we, you know, something gets lost in translation, so I, I would assume that we would both be attending all of those, you know, unless this you travel or some, some conflict.
Okay. I don't get the invites.
Just out of curiosity, you got me when I covered it?
After the, the time we asked him, I started getting emails.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I make a couple of comments on the meeting? The one question I had for a long time was, if the four Whittier School Committee members who were put on the rack are voting, they had been determined to be non-voting, that would give the communities all equal weight, which is good.
Yeah.
The other issue, which I think was pretty important, was Angus had compiled a letter to the MSBA to try and convince them that the previous feasibility documentation is still valid if they account for inflation on numbers, not to have to redo the whole thing. And so I think the path we're looking to go forward is to have the letter finalized, it was pretty damn close. And then get our local legislators to take this and present it to MSBA versus the district. Because I said, if the district does it, it carries the weight. We can convince our legislatures to do that and they do it. I think you avoid probably a couple of months of early down around.
And if I can just add to that, I think part of the thought, which, which seemed like a shrewd suggestion, was you know, perhaps the legislators could do it a lower profile way so that the MSBA doesn't feel defensive about it, but you know, whether that means going to someone more senior and just kind of saying, hey, this is a waste of money and don't make them waste their money, some, some something that could allow them to pivot without, you know, losing face.
Yeah.
Good.
Last comment was, the new flying the ointment seems to be Rowley.
Are they new?
Well, previously I would have said it was Hanbro, but now Rowley has come back to, they were really stirring it up. I mean, this has to be unanimous though at the end of the day, and they were basically waving a flag pretty hard.
And there were, what, six or seven out there?
I was in town, they just stand up and wave a flag.
It was a big petition.
Oh, that's an interesting term.
Well, especially when they weren't at the prior meeting and, and part of, well, I gather they had gone to that Whittier School Committee meeting and, and created some drama a couple of weeks ago was, was, I believe, based on a misunderstanding because they hadn't been a prior working group meeting in terms of whether this RAC is a prop, you know, appropriately a subcommittee of the school committee. I think after the last meeting on October eighth, we all felt it was, and that was largely because we got a legal opinion from the Whittier attorney. It made perfect sense of why it kind of has to be that way, because the, the school committee is the there's only two ways to initiate amendments to the regional agreement. One is through the school committee. The other is by five percent of the registered voters in any of the communities, which is not impossible, but it's largely.
Yes, for the smallest community.
Yeah, right. So, so the, the point being, really the only realistic way for there to be amendments to the regional agreement is if the school committee refers that. So once we all understood that, because that's, as you know, not the case, for instance, with the Kentucky Regional Agreement or this board or the select board group or MRMAC could initiate changes, that's not the way it works. They have to come from the school committee. So once, you know, once that was clearly stated, then it makes perfect sense that this would be an advisory committee to the school committee. And I think we all came out of the October eighth, made very much at peace with that and very much at peace with Maureen's represent, representation, which I, I a hundred percent, you know, believe that there's no intent on the school committee to, to meddle in this, that they want the communities to to advise that. They don't, you know, they don't want to, you know, they want to be at the meetings so they can know what's going on, but they're not looking to like their managers. So it seemed like there were some misunderstandings that I thought were, were resolved in a very clear way at the last working group meeting. No one from Rowley had been there and then they showed up at the next school committee meeting, making a big issue of these things that had already kind of been put in the bag for the rest of us, so.
And Rowley had floated the the thought, I guess, of withdrawing from the regional agreement previously too, so.
They are.
As no surprise.
Okay.
Anything else on that, Chris?
I think that was enough.
Maybe two.
Next item, I just, I included this because we had our, earlier today, Rebecca and I had our indoor review meeting with insurance as, as it was. It was about a two hour meeting. In the old days, there used to be three and a half hours, so that's progress, but you know, we go through every single policy, all the coverages, and, you know, we keep that stuff current you know, on a, on a rolling basis, so it's, at this point, there's no surprises. My first couple of years here, there was a lot of cleanup on a lot of the schedules where, you know, when I started here, the town was insuring property no longer owned, the town was not insuring property. It did, I mean, there was not a lot of, you know, no one minding the store in twenty eighteen, come a long way since then, so it's, it's, it's routine, but there's always you know, new nuances, often in the area of cyber and just what to expect looking forward, but they also give us, you know, they let us know where we are with our, our loss ratios and how we compare with other of their municipalities. We are, we do very, knock on wood, we're very favorable. So we've been told that if we carry a two and a half percent budget increase, that that will probably be more than enough. That's for the property casualty, for, for the police and fire, more like five percent. We, we won't know those rates until you know, closer to budget season, but it's always helpful to get. Uh, we we won't know those rates until, um, you know, closer to budget season, but it's always helpful to get that kind of preseason, uh, you know, projection of where, where, where they see things going. Uh, so that was, you know, it was a good meeting, no surprises. Um, a couple of brief updates on construction schedule, we have, um, uh, Highland Landscaping under, uh, contract to do the pickleball courts, we had a pre-construction meeting last Monday, uh, with all the parties present, and, uh, I included in the packet the construction schedule, so they'll be moving forward, you know, you know, quickly. And you'll see, I think, quite a bit in the next four weeks on that.
They're already updated with.
I'm not surprised, I haven't been out, but yeah.
Kind of big stuff.
Yeah, 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 they were gonna mobilize this week, so.
Great.
I've been changing my desk, or or other things elsewhere, Whittier and Pimfaket, so of course. So Middle Street Bridge, um, we had a, uh, a construction progress meeting last Friday, uh, which I attended, and Dan Callahan, our our conservation agent was there as well, um, they're making great progress there. We s, we, we know there's gonna be cost impact, obviously, all this unsuitable material. Uh, uh, so we're, we're working to get toward, uh, a number on that. Um, and we've also asked for an updated, uh, schedule, we've been told verbally, uh, but prior to putting things out there, we we like to have it in writing, but but we do have every reason to expect the project is gonna be totally complete, you know, around, probably by like May or June, um, so that's, I think, great news. And then on the Pike, uh, Page Pike State Crosswalk, this is a pretty much a daily project management, um, and there's a lot of dynamics with this, um, you know, obviously, the project's taken quite a bit longer than, uh, we were told, uh, but there have been specific reasons for that, and we've been working very closely with the vendor, and there's a lot of permitting involved with DOT. Even though it's been permitted, but even the things like the nighttime work, or the, uh, notice ahead of time, we're getting the police details, there've been times that's gonna challenge, uh, manpower wise. Um, but there are a couple of specific issues, one that I put into the packet, uh, we had a good heads up from a resident who who correctly pointed out that the extent of the, uh, stone dust path, uh, didn't go as far on the ground as it did in the plan, uh, so we've got a commitment from, uh, Commonwealth Construction, the contractor, to to rectify that. They're happy to do that, uh, obviously, it's part of the, part of the plan. And, uh, although I had alluded earlier tonight to, uh, some spot work that we're gonna be looking to do on inva- invasives, there was some, uh, pre-existing knotweed down the north side of the road. Uh, this was observed, and there was an initial concern as to whether that might have been part of the fill and brought in. Uh, it was not a fill on the north and the south side of the roads, who were, it's both the same, and there's nothing on the south side, and, uh, we have verification from, uh, the highway department that there was, there was already knotweed in that area. Uh, so we had invited a proposal from, um, uh, Ecological Land Management, our vendor, as to what type of treatment, what frequency, and he said, he said it's gonna be multiple applications, really spanning over the course of three seasons to really fully eradicate it in that area, and he gave us a pro- cost proposal that that seems very modest, uh, two thousand dollars for all of that, for free, uh, I think, uh, six applications over the course of two years, so we haven't formalized that through contract, but we are aware of the knotweed, and we are, uh, taking steps to make sure that that gets taken care of, because obviously, if left unchecked, that can become a huge problem.
Angus, could I interrupt before we move to that topic? As far as the extra work goes at the Middle Street Bridge, um, it, uh, I'm curious about a couple of things, and it's okay if the answers come, uh, at a later date, but it's, uh, I'm curious about the process for that actual work. Are they gonna be providing a, a, um, a lump sum cost estimate? Um, how is it substantiated? Will they provide like a recapitulation chart? If we don't like that number, do we have the option to do it time and materials if we think that it's, um, overestimated? So I'm just kinda curious largely in light of what I, the ambiguity that I saw on the church and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, like, when, uh, when I've seen, like, I'll I'll see town projects that reference the state specs, that are like bulletproof, you know, the mastier piece specs, as far as cost overruns and change orders and things like that. I don't know if that was done with this one.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyhow, that was just.
Okay, yeah, I can follow up with your offer, there, we have full time inspection on this one, um, and, uh, it's, uh, but I can, I can get you that. I mean, basically, the the unsuitable materials, they they haven't been able to, uh, give us a, a, a cost because they haven't known how much there would be until it was completely, um, excavated.
Okay.
So, but but I'll get you, there's a, there's a lot of information that I can get.
But it's probably gonna be based off of actual costs.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of.
No, yeah, I mean, we've got, yeah, we've got, uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll get that specific.
Okay.
And I'll get it from our review engineer, so it's not me translating it, and it's not really language I'm, that's fluent on.
Sure, okay.
Uh, let's see, and then, uh, just one more thing on Page Pike State, we do have a meeting on site this Tuesday with the contractor, with National Grid, uh, to review the, uh, electrical work for the, um, for the RRFBs, that's been one of the issues that's lagged, uh, they were kind of cutting foundations on the RRFBs because of how the, uh, uh, conduits were were designed, so we're meeting on site on Tuesday with, uh, with National Grid. And, uh, Bush and I had a call yesterday, we're doing, uh, uh, with the Commonwealth, uh, Destruction President, that just made sure we have all the information we need to to, uh, make sure that goes well. Uh, the next item, uh, I wanted to put this on there because obviously, we put a lot of thought into the, uh, letter that was sent over to the planning board, uh, a few weeks ago, setting out the select boards in my office's priorities for the planning department. Uh, the October twenty first meeting, I was not at, but I believe Wendy, you were at, and, uh, it seems that they, I've met with the planner a number of times, and actually, earlier today, he and I met with, uh, uh, planning board chair for about an hour and a half to review a, a whole host of issues, and, uh, uh, it seems like those priorities have been embraced by the planning board. Uh, my question's gonna be, are there other, like, what are the other things they're gonna be directing to that office? Because I I just wanna be mindful of, uh, bandwidth, and really, in particular, making sure that the things that we prioritize get the attention that they're gonna need, especially with the, uh, they're actively working, uh, they met the other, uh, what, last Tuesday, and I did actually go ahead and listen to that, made it just that, uh, uh, but they've got a draft scope in circulation right now for the visioning phase of the comprehensive planning process. And, uh, uh, I've got Caitlin working on that on the procurement side, so once that scope gets finalized, she's gonna be ready to send that out to prospective vendors, but that's gonna involve, uh, essentially, a master plan steering committee, that's all gonna be under the offices of the planning board, which under master under law is responsible for comprehensive planning. Uh, so that's really gonna have everything to do with how they wanna constitute that, but, uh, in my experience, and based on what was discussed at the meeting last week, which was fully aligned with what I would have expected, based on my planning, uh, experience. Uh, you know, that's gonna be a, a larger committee, uh, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, bandwidth consumed with that, so I, I just wanna make sure that as we're getting toward formally kicking off a process, that we, you know, have the staff focused on making sure that's handled right, um, and not diluted by a, a lot of things that may or may not be time sensitive, so that's gonna be a continuing thing, but I think we ought to definitely, uh, heater, continue to be paying attention to what, um, uh, what what the planning board's priorities are, to ideally try to keep aligned, because there is a lot, uh, coming down the pike. Uh, next item, uh, I just wanted to kind of recognize the work Christian's been doing, uh, he went to this summit back in May, and he'd sent this memo actually back in, back in May, but it it didn't seem timely, that at the time, we had a lot we were dealing with at that point, and more recently, uh, I included this information about this, uh, cyber program. We participated in this prior years, this is something where, uh, you know, we opt in, it's not a grant, it's not like a cost thing, we're not paying anything, it's just something that we, uh, we agree to participate, and then they, uh, run a series of trainings and drills over the course of the year, uh, Christian, uh, part of his responsibilities are as the town's, uh, kind of cyber liaison. And he did, uh, submit yesterday, uh, we're, we're Jake, and I I reviewed it as well. Uh, submitted, uh, basically the paperwork to formally opt in to that program again. Uh, one of the questions I had for him, and and the answer is yes, is, um, is the training calibrated not just per community, but per individual within their community? Because obviously, we've had, uh, some staffing changes, and so while some of our staff, who've been here a number of years, have been through multiple rounds of this, uh, and may be ready for, or, you know, more like something different. We also have newer hires who may or may not have have, you know, participated in this kind of thing in the past, so I wanna make sure that we have different kind of, uh, uh, kind of training points for different people, based on their position, whether the organization is, or else their, their level of knowledge and experience, but, uh, you know, cybersecurity, it, you know, continues to be a focus, and I think will be an increasing focus, uh, so I just wanted to, uh, you know, put some recognition toward the work that Christian's been doing. And, uh, then I included a couple of miscellaneous updates, uh, under just, uh, you know, other issues, uh, the, uh, tree committee had put together the Arbor Day proclamation, so I signed that, and then earlier today, I got there's some, uh, paperwork that we submit every year for continued participation as a tree city, uh, so I'll sign that and return that, and, um, that's, that's actually gone extremely well, the tree committee, that's all the work, uh, to do assign and submit, so it's, I appreciate what they're doing, I don't think it's a great program. Uh, I included the tax rate certification, this is a really big deal, uh, not just in general, to get the tax rate certified, but to get on on November seventh, is the envy of a lot of cities and towns in Massachusetts, so, uh, again, it's testament to all the great work of our finance team, and including the setting, of course, especially with Rich here.
But I didn't say that anyway.
It's all, it's all Christian, but I just, it's fine, we, we told you to sign.
And, uh, I included yesterday's, uh, agenda for the land management working group, as, as you know, that's a really, um, very, very important, touchstone where we meet every two weeks or so, and I don't know if there's anything within that that you wanna touch on, but that's intended to just continue to give you, uh, transparency on on the issues.
Touch on one?
Yeah, of course.
Tell me if I'm not supposed to.
Yeah.
Houseboat?
It's gone.
Okay.
But is it?
It's like ninety percent gone. Yeah.
By the owner or by enforcement?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, now it's, it's been. Yeah.
That doesn't look like the pink house.
Jeez, Ross, you really took a deep dive there. We have our own pink houses. That's excellent.
It is, it is, yeah.
Just think of how many hours it took you.
Years.
A lot of people.
Yeah. Uh, and then the next one, the, uh, Green Communities Annual Report is due every year right around this time, so, uh, this is another one where, you know, at a staff level, uh, Caitlin is kind of the point, Caitlin Barker's kind of the point person, uh, she gathers a lot of information, uh, especially from the finance department on energy usage and and invoicing and so forth, although really, that's entered on a year-round basis as part of the Green Communities Program. Uh, but really, the the committee, the Energy and Sustainability Committee, and and specifically, uh, you know, he self-estimated that he put in about twenty hours in preparing this, so I wanna definitely thank him for that continued, uh, volunteer effort, uh, so it's, this program has always been a team effort, I shall say, when I started in twenty eighteen, it was like, I would say, like ninety eight percent volunteer, we've been migrating it more and more towards staff. Um, and and the goal was to get to where, uh, it's really, I don't know, there's always gonna, I think the committee has a really important role to play, and always will, but in terms of the workload, you know, I think we wanna get more and more to where it's really a staff. Uh, because it's, as long as we're in this program, it's a requirement, it's a baseline responsibility, and something we have to do, so.
Where would you say we are now, fifty fifty?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Caitlin about that specifically, um, I I do know that, you know, Rick said she was terrific and totally responsive and got everything she needed, but you can just tell when reviewing it, there's narratives and there's things that, um, you know, I'm sure you, you know, you kinda, you know, have a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did do, I did review everything, and I did make a couple of adjustments, but I substantially kept it as as it was prepared, but I did have some things just a little bit differently to make sure they were a hundred percent kind of accurate, or to the best I could with the time I had. Um, I I was not, was not sent to my desk until late Thursday afternoon, and it was due Friday, so I didn't have a whole lot of time with it, but I did what I could with the time that I had.
Ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
First of all, I wish they knew more about it, I mean, it's an interesting document, there's a lot there.
Hmm.
For a novice to digest this, you know, thank you for Rick for doing. Solar PV installation on the DPW shed roof.
Yeah.
It says that's planned, I.
Yeah.
That whole thing is really, I just snagged up on it squishy.
Yeah, so so on that one, Larry, what, what page of the packet are you on?
Twenty two.
Because there, the way it was, I I definitely.
I think the way ahead of us on, on the intent, without, what, we studied a number of different locations, whether it was ground.
Oh, you know what? Oh, that word plans, oh, yeah, I didn't catch that, I was focused on the narrative.
I did gate sending, but next.
Yeah, that's, so in the narrative, it was written, so I, okay, I I adjusted the narrative, I actually didn't even look at that. I had very, very good time, but would have liked.
More time.
More time, but.
So again, what the problem with it is, is they realize that the roof of the shed can't support it, so basically, they trust with a simple roof.
Right.
So you'd have to rebuild the whole roof, which I don't think, when they evaluated all the sites, that was factored in, so maybe this becomes a much less desirable site, I just don't wanna find out, you start going down this path and go, right, I'm already asking how do we get there, so.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the narrative on page, top page twenty six, this is, the way this was written was kind of presumptuous or presumptive, that this was kind of like imminent. And it, I remember for sure, it had the word unfortunately, and I, I did tweak the narrative to try to make it more, you know, so I, you know, I said the board's work plan doesn't include the work toward obtaining this cost info and financial payback, whether the initiative is assigned higher priority, will be a town policy discussion, discussion, we discussed within that. Annual review of the town capital improvement program, so, you know, kinda couched it properly, because I do think it should be talked about in the capital improvement program, and the direction will come ultimately from the big town and select board, just to where or when that fits into the priorities or whether.
It might not, because if it's.
Right.
You know, half a million dollars to upgrade the roof, it could be cheaper to do a round installation on them or not.
Well, but what I would say, even the work to like get those cost estimates and that payback, even that is not something that we're doing without directions to do that.
Okay.
Uh, but that was, that was, uh, that that came up in spring.
Yeah.
And there, there was talk about doing the roof, which Brian was gonna do himself.
Correct.
And it was not, it seemed like a colossal task to me, but it.
Yeah, it's gotta be an engineered structure at that point.
But he made it seem like, uh, you know, it was within his capability, and it wouldn't have been a ter, been a terribly heavy lift, but, but I think what killed it was that we didn't think it was right to upgrade the roof separate and apart from the solar installation, because then it's kinda like the taxpayer, you're pot committed to the solar.
Before you understand. Right, fixing the roof, because there's really no reason to fix it, other than if it needs just.
And this is, now I'm talking temporary building, but it's a, it's a storage shed.
Yeah.
To think that it has the same structural integrity as a, a building you put up, to make that solid enough to put panels on it, might be a fool's game. You get a, you can't win that.
Yeah.
Um, and then my second one of our comment, it's, uh, page twenty five, stretch code adoption, where a stretch code community, which, I didn't know a whole lot about that till I started doing my ADU, it became very painful. Um, what I wanna say to our guests is, to be a stretch code community, then you have to comply with hers regulation to take it to a different level. That directly goes in conflict with affordable housing, because you can't make units affordable if you're complying with this. And my simple little ADU, just to put it in perspective, to comply with the hers, and the stretch code is costing you even thousand dollars, so if somebody's trying to build affordable housing, it's gonna be pretty darn close to impossible, the the two sort of conflict with each other. Um, I suspect, I was talking to Paul Sobigny earlier today when I was getting the COVID shot. Uh, he said there are six ADUs been permitted in town, and I know at least two of the others have paid significant, um, to have the same issue addressed, so these ADUs aren't gonna be, you know, a hundred thousand dollar units, it's impossible. So they're gonna be two, three times more than people anticipate, so, um, it makes it very difficult to create affordable housing, some of the regulations, you have to comply with them.
Well, I think Stan would be very happy to come in, I don't wanna set a date, obviously, without checking for the availability, but in general, he's always happy to come before the board, he's very, very knowledgeable about all this, and. Before the board, he's very, very knowledgeable about all this and uh. Also, I'm sure you saw, you know, later in the packet, this this new law that's coming down the pipeline permitting of of, you know, renewable energy. Um I think it'd be, it'd be interesting, cause the the town, I believe, became a stretch, adopted a stretch code before I started here. Uh so I was not part of that process, um and uh. I think it'd be, you know, he could, he could, he would be the most knowledgeable.
Well, we've had conversations, it's kind of kind of comical.
Yeah.
The concept is good, the ex, the ability to execute is very difficult, like, you know, I had to take. I had the industry windows, every single one had to be pulled out and put new, all the insulation had to come out and new. All the drywall had to come out and be new, I had to put in a special thirty thousand dollar heating system, I mean. All this stuff, I had a heating system with two years old in the building, but it was oilified, you can't have that, so. These were, you know, Sam's aware of all, we talked about it.
Oh, I know he is, yeah, but just to bring, you know, you as as the chief policymaking entity in the town. You know, even though the decision was made years ago, I think it's, it would be good.
I'm not second guessing the decision, I'm just saying, when people think of affordable housing and you think you can build one of these units. Cause you got the land or I even had a building, you can do it for a hundred fifty thousand, it's not gonna happen. There's just way too many requirements to satisfy.
So that's what I had for updates.
You know, Brendan was playing with Nina.
I know, I've been so busy this week, I I.
Max reached out to him this morning, I do not believe we've heard back, so if he's not on the phone call, then if we maybe wait till next meeting.
Yeah, and it would be good if we know which committees.
That that's what I I chatted with Max this morning, I guess Brendan had an interest in all of the committees. Uh but I said that maybe next time we should ask to have them there by the choices, so you just know the one, so we're gonna work on that.
Okay. Just one, I mean, I I find there's a synergy between the climate change and the energy sustainability.
Yeah, he also has cultural council, so I just, I I wasn't clear whether he's applying for all three, actually, yes, okay. Alright, great. Uh I have B is a request to increase the scheduled hours of the library's head of circulation. So we have a memo in the packet from the library director, Bruce Flaherty. We should know, my friend.
Hi.
And so um you wanna just give us an overview with the request?
Sure, um so after twenty years, our head of circ is retiring. Um and this position is the closest thing I have to an assistant director, um the person manages all the staff on the circulation desk, does all the scheduling. And really holds things together out on the floor. Um I think that I will get uh more serious, better candidates if it's a full time position. And the person applying doesn't need to get a second job. Um and additionally, we are, uh we've been chronically understaffed for many years, so you know, a little bump. In 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 the weekly hours would really help us out tremendously.
So is thirty five hours enough? That that's full time?
Um thirty five hours can be considered full time.
Okay.
Well, just, you know.
I just mean, if if and if if the idea is to increase the attractiveness of the position, is increasing it four hours gonna achieve that?
I mean, I I would love to increase it to forty, I didn't think that that was feasible, um so I'm asking for thirty five.
Okay.
Just I I'm not trying to split hairs and all, I I'm supportive of the request.
Yeah.
Uh but just technically, under the personnel policy, forty hours is full time, so. It would be, if it was, if someone was hired at thirty five, they would be considered a qualified part time employee. What that basically means is they would accrue. Uh you know, a week of vacation would be thirty five hours, not forty hours, so it really wouldn't. Matter because they're still getting the same number of weeks, but they accrue at a slightly different rate because we accrue based on hours, not days, so. Now, it was a split hairs, but just technically full time under the personnel policy is forty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, Ben, Ross or Chris?
Corinne, did you, you you thought that forty, asking for forty wasn't feasible? Um for for what reason for?
I just thought it was uh less likely to be approved um. By the select board, um but if you, i- i- if you were willing to to approve forty, I would. Very graciously accept forty, it would help us tremendously.
So, I mean Angus, what is our role here? So are we being asked because it's a budget issue or?
You're being asked for uh for two reasons, uh for one is if uh. So, under the uh. I I give give a roundabout answer, but it's gonna get to your your question, so so. For the appointments that that the town manager makes, uh the board adopted a policy a couple of years ago that. Allows my office to make a hire provided the person meets the qualifications. That the position is within the the range and that it is within budget.
Okay.
So I, even though that formal, and and Corinne is the appointing authority for the library staff, so there's not like a formal policy, but I kind of. True, think of it the same way, so like if she was hiring someone at the. Budgeted rate, which is thirty one hours, she wouldn't need your approval or my approval, she's the appointing authority. But to hire someone above that. Uh since the select board back in June, when you approved that salary and wage schedule for the whole year. This position was in for thirty one hours and under the Town Manager Act, it does provide that the. Select board approves all salary and wages, so I certainly would not feel that there'd be authority to hire above that without. Specific board approval, and the second reason is is budgeting, because let's say. You know, I told Corinne, yeah, yeah, go ahead and do it, then she brings forward her budget in two or three months and there's a little bump and someone's like, oh, why'd it go up? And oh, because we changed this and I can see the board saying, what do you mean you changed that? Like, it was approved at thirty one, so. I think process wise, it's it's very important to make sure that any change like this is with the explicit knowledge and and support of the 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 board.
Okay.
So what's the delta on the cost from thirty one to forty?
Corinne did run some numbers on that and uh feels that, I don't want to speak for you, but it can really largely be absorbed with both. Some some periods of understaffing uh within her department. Um as well as there's a, there's a small amount of contingency carry in the library, um. It's like three grand per year, but it's a, it's a fairly small amount, I did, Corinne, by the way, I I had uh Jenny take a look at that, she. She totally agreed with your math on that, so Jenny felt that if this is supported at thirty five rather than thirty one. It would be largely absorbable, it might overspend the budget by five or six hundred dollars.
But I'm saying on an annual basis, what's, what does thirty one hours cost you versus forty hours?
But you guys have younger numbers than forty.
Not, we have run the numbers on forty.
Okay, Corinne, can you extrapolate if you're going from thirty one to forty?
Sure.
Let me extrapolate.
The the other factor, of course, is that, you know, the incumbent's uh gonna be at a certain. Pay rate and someone hired may or may not be at that rate, maybe lower, probably wouldn't be higher, but.
I'd make an assumption at the rate you call.
Yeah, at the same rate.
I just don't know where magnitude.
Yeah, yeah.
It's thirty five.
Hold on one second. So the difference um. Annually from thirty one to forty at that rate would be about thirteen thousand dollars.
And what, what was thirty one to thirty five? Did you see it was about five thousand?
It was about six, yeah.
But some portion of that thirteen in the same. In the same fashion would be able to be absorbed into the existing budget you're there.
And that thirteen is for an entire year, it's not for the remaining year, that would be for an entire year.
So the next fifth, we would be adding the N S's thirteen thousand for the budget.
Exactly.
Unless something catastrophic happened and lost employees and had extra cash flow, but that wouldn't be very helpful.
Well, I would think, I would think the the new person would come in lower on the wage scale. Right? Given that the current person has been here for a long time, is probably higher in the wage scale, right?
They they would come in slightly lower.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Alright.
I think.
Yeah.
Depending on how it's poundful.
Yeah, I think it'd be much more attractive at forty hours.
You don't want, say, five grand to get somebody that, or six grand, whatever it is, and get somebody that's quite a bit less capable.
Ready for me, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I need to delve if you're gonna approve thirty five, just to prove the forty, cause the delta's probably five grand.
Right.
And in terms of an attractive wage as well, I think that's that's a smart move, because if. I just put myself in someone's shoes, if they're hired at thirty five and they're working for making certain amount.
Yeah.
They're gonna be pushing for a higher hour rate to get to that, I'd rather have them work the forties. Yeah, to get to that that number, you know, work the same full time hours that that, you know, the other full time workers are working.
Would that help with vacation scheduling and all of that?
It would help so much with vacation scheduling, um you know, I did the math and and then the nineteen weeks since July first, um. The staff has used four hundred and eighty nine hours of vacation and we have um. Budgeted at three hours a week for on calls, so we've covered thirty nine of those four hundred eighty nine hours, so on average, we're short. About twenty three hours a week in staff um hours, which puts a significant strain on the staff in general.
Make a motion to. Endorse. Authorize the library director to post for.
Forty hours.
For forty hours for a new uh head of circulation and technology.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, Grant.
I cannot thank you, I cannot thank you all enough, it's a really big deal, thanks very much.
I'd be happy for you.
Alright, have a nice night.
Bye. Okay. N C is a request to endorse the right of right to farm disclosure form and come up with a plan for public notices. So as this was envisioned, town clerk's office could manage this process, um so there's a form in the packet.
Well, just just, yeah, so the town clerk would be the keeper of the records when the forms come in.
Yes.
It should be put in the body act, in terms of the the notification that was intended to really go through the treasurer's office. So that's part of what I wanted to touch on tonight, so the the form is what's before you.
Yeah.
But when, you know, the way it's written is to also talk about kind of plan for public notices. Uh I met with Caitlin on this a couple of times and we'll do whatever you'd like done, uh but there there's been talk, I think, right along. To have something in the tax bill that goes out, um so that that goes to every uh current property owner. Uh and the question is, uh if, you know, is that something you'd want to see like an insert? Uh to bring attention, this would just be the first year, uh or would you like to see something just simply printed on the tax bill? I'm I'm assuming we're not sending a form to everyone, cause the form is required of new people moving into the community, but the idea has been that. How do you best let everybody who already owns property in town know that we're now a designated right to farm community, and I think that. What has made sense all along was to put that in the tax bill, cause that goes to every property owner anyway, so so is there a couple of offices involved? Uh treasurer collector's office is part of the notice, really, the town clerk's only role that's been envisioned is simply when these forms are. Based on file, that they've got a three ring binder to just, that way, anytime anyone comes in, asks to see the forms, they're in one place.
Yeah, so they're not following up on people who have had a real estate transaction, to make sure that they turn their form.
Correct.
Yeah, that's probably what we have discussed it. Um so are there any financial implications for an insert in the tax bill? It's the same postage?
It uh same postage, it does cost some pretty costs, it's it's not an amount that to me I would even like. I I don't think that should affect the decision, I think it was something that was every year, that that's something that's, but I don't. Personally, I I don't think that's ever been anticipated, I think it's that initial upon adoption, how do you affirmatively let everybody know? There's posting requirements, but but how do you go kind of above and beyond, and I think sending something within the tax bill is the best way to hit every property owner.
Is there any, I don't even remember what the tax bill looks like in the mail contest, I just want to make it right. Is there any way to print it right on the front of the envelope, just a little? Uh let it catch your attention, right?
Yeah, it's certainly possible, yeah, I I don't know if there's any reason with tax bills specifically, I I mean, certainly impossible.
Say notification, please be aware, Westbury is now a right to farm community and visit the website for further detail, you know.
Yeah.
Something real simple.
Yeah.
Versus an insert, it should ink at that point.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, again, if it's on the bill, I just look at the number, have hired that and pay it. If there's a note on the side, I'm not reading that, cause who knows what kind of trouble you get into.
Right.
So put it on the envelope, that's gonna get everybody's attention.
You could just put a a link to the webpage.
Yeah.
QR code or something. And if for some reason it doesn't time up with the tax bills, we also have the ability to put them into the census.
Mm hmm.
In January, so that's.
Okay.
Best option. You can do a little box slip, so you can differentiate on all, save money.
Maybe then we wouldn't have residents going into a party type of thing. Or they can read it.
The minute it arrives, I said, I'm gonna press it up.
Rich, did you have anything to add as chair of the act committee?
No, no, but I'm here for this.
Yeah.
If there are any questions, um. But the other. Well, one question I have is who writes the copy? Uh is that something that your staff will write or is that?
We would, but I mean, if you guys wanted to ghostwrite it, we'd be happy to accept the draft, or or once there's a draft ready, we'd be happy to bounce it off you guys. We want it done in a way that you're happy with, so whatever it takes to do that is what we want to do.
How about they draft it, send it to Slight, what would you say applies?
Yeah, should that be fine, yeah.
Can I ask one question on the form? It's a stupid question, cause it's in the bylaw. Who talks about buyers versus occupants? What's, it's supposed to be for the buyer, probably, not, I I don't understand the differential there.
They're trying to catch the leases. Yeah, so if somebody's leasing a property as opposed to buying it, they want them to get the right to farm notice as well.
But that's, again, I'm not gonna fight it, cause it's in the bylaw, I understand the wording, I just don't understand the concept. So anytime the lease turns over, is the owner of the property supposed to notify the leases? The owner of the property is responsible, not the leases.
Uh right, well, the same, the same issue's present with the purchase, because. I don't think anybody in, I think what we were saying at the meeting was that. We're not aware of any town departments having visibility into a P and S prior to closing. So that was the other thing we were talking about, is who distributes this of the P, you know, within twenty one days of the P and S.
It's the Realtors.
The Realtors, right, so it's gotta get up, so if we approve the form, then we would somehow get uploaded into MLS and then the Realtors. Yeah, I guess if a Realtor is involved with the lease. But yeah, if they're not, then.
There's still the property owner who has the obligation on the property.
Right.
And they should have to know about the leases. I understand the wording, cause in the in the bylaws, it should be in that, I just, I'm kind of fuzzy.
Um you didn't hear any feedback from Tim, did you?
No, I didn't.
Well, we're gonna write copy for the, I guess that would happen separately. I I had asked um Tim to just take a look at this before we, you know, put it in the circulation. Is that, do you think you need Tim's approval? It's pretty straightforward, there's lots of forms out.
It's kind of based out of most of the documents, so I don't, I I'll buy him with it.
Alright, so do we approve the form then?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the right to farmers closing notification forms presented.
Second.
No favor?
Just for discussion, I just, this is just about, sometimes you see this on public forums, is maybe just put in the footer, like. The date, that way if, if it was changed in the future, it'd be very clear, like, something like that, so like today's date.
So that I can pardon the motion about the date and that. Of that, the idea.
There's so much too.
That's scary. Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Fine. Alright, and then in terms of the process, you're gonna write copy?
Pull the tax bill.
Yeah. Well, do we want it to be the census bill or the tax bill?
Well, I I've been working with Caitlin toward the tax bill, I think that's a, I think that's a great fallback plan, uh but I I don't have any reason to think it. It wouldn't come together for the tax bill.
Oh, we're we're talking about.
I mean, you could do it in addition if you wanted.
Yeah.
Tax bill.
Alright, so we don't need copy then, right?
Well, I mean, personally, I I think just, you know, even if it's on the envelope, I mean, you don't think having like even a little like. Sheet of paper in there, in addition to referring people to the website, it's a matter of how. You know, how uh proactive do you want to be on on getting the word out?
And the simplicity envelope, make it a piece of paper, I don't know.
Yeah.
If we get your bill from the registry and it's all the advertisements.
You throw them out.
Throw them out, that that that'll let us go on too, it's on the envelope, you have to read it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's unavoidable.
Okay.
Alright, so do you want to bring that to the next meeting or, I guess we have some time, right?
Yeah, the tax bill doesn't go out till, I mean, now that the. Yeah, the tax bill doesn't go out till, I mean, now that the tax rate's set, uh. I, you know, but it's usually around the end of the December, right?
Right to farm?
Yes.
Bring it to the next meeting, I wouldn't delay, just.
Yeah, let's just get it off, and, yeah. That work for you, Rich?
Sure.
Okay, great. Alright, anything else on this item?
Just, I I I doubt this is an issue, but I just, it crossed my mind, so. I I doubt there's any reason that can't be on the envelope of a tax bill, but. If the treasurer says, oh, there's some legal reason it can't, you know, I think we would just work on copy, I'm sure it's fine. But you never, I know there's certain things on like, I mean, voting materials or, you know, you just, I'm not a treasure collector, so I don't know what the.
So if that happens, can we just do like a a third of the? A third of the paper, not the entire page?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Brief, same same content, just on a different.
Makes sense.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next item is a review of a draft work from home and tell community policy. As well as a draft tenant policy, policy for exempt salary employees.
So the memo I put in the packet, it's it's, in the course of working on this, I uh, you know, I've talked to Wendy a number of times and. You know, what's happened is there's a number of uh personnel policy amendments that have been in draft form for some time. Uh, Chris, you'll remember, uh, Ross, you won't, because it was before you were on the board, but last, I think it was last. April or May, we had prepared a draft amendment on the vacation policy. And we had asked the board to refer that to hearing, and and it was not referred to hearing, there was some additional research that was requested at the time. But that draft policy is all written. Um, uh, there's another one that I found when I looked onto my server that is uh, is to do with. Uh, which was, let's see. It's, it's the, is to do with the uh sections two and section three. It's uh some specific language on things, including like internal postings. See, I have to grab somewhere in my sent, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think to print up the pack, I have the uh the materials, but. The point is, we have a number of draft amendments that have been in circulation uh with the finance department. And a couple of others that are more recent that are still under review. My goal is to get these before the board for hearing, because you can't vote amendments until they've been posted for ten days. Um, you know, the obvious answer is, well, don't bring it to the board for referral until they're fully drafted, but. You know what's on my plate, there's a reason this stuff, weekend, week out, doesn't get the time to meet, so. In my estimation, the things that I've listed in this memo on page thirty-six are all within striking range of being ready for prime time. When you go to a public hearing, the goal isn't, in my opinion, to have something that is a hundred percent. What you want, the goal is to have something that is worth the time to have a hearing and to get. Everybody kind of stirred up about, for forget, forgive for pun, because some of these changes are very pro employee. Um, uh, you know, I think some will be viewed different ways, but there's uh. Changing per policy is not inherently a bad thing, uh, but it is something that people get like. Uh, you know, it's like when I send out, when my office sends out a notice, there's gonna be a hearing and change the personnel policy. I'm gonna get dozens and dozens of like, what's going on, you know, so it's it stirs things up, so. That creates, you you've heard me say at a prior, you know, meeting a couple of one, you know, a couple of meetings ago, there's kind of this. Process to amend the personnel policy, it doesn't, might have seemed that cumbersome to. Post something ten days ahead, but in practice, it has meant getting something to the board at least two weeks ahead. That is really ready for prime time, and so that creates a certain lead time to actually get something ready for a vote. That in practice has has in fact resulted in multiple policies. Being drafted to where, at least at a staff level, or the finance department, myself, we think are are like, ready to go. But have not been voted, uh. So I guess I'm trying to clear that backlog, and since we were working on a couple of these more. Uh, issues that I I look at as somewhat front burner issues. Uh, like a work from home tell commuting policy, I I really wanna get something on the books. And I'm concerned that if we don't get moving fairly quickly. It's gonna be January, and then we're in a budget and town meeting, and if it's anything like last cycle, which I certainly hope it won't, but with those sixty articles, that really crowds out. That takes a lot of oxygen out of the room for a period of months, and and basically, you don't even get back to it till here we are in November. So I guess what I what I would ask is if if the board is comfortable authorizing. Uh, that, you know, saying basically we'll have a hearing on the fourth, and the ten days prior to that, which would be no later than November twenty-fourth. Uh, which is a week from Monday, anything that would be considered at the hearing would be broadly circulated, you know, those who've been on the board for. Couple of years know that when I circulate proposed policies, they are. In red line, striped through, underline, like very, very clear what's changing, it's not a vague thing, it's a very specific thing, so. I'd like to have the latitude to continue to work on that over the next week and a half. Uh, my suggestion is that the finance staff and myself would work with the um. Uh, with the chair, who's also the board personnel liaison. So that nothing would actually be circulated for hearing without Wendy's blessing. Keeping in mind also that in order to amend the personnel policy, you need a three-nothing vote under the way that policy is written, so. If it doesn't have the chair's endorsement, it's not even worth bringing it to here. So when, you know, when we, Wendy and I, we we start working on the draft agenda typically like, you know. Ten days ahead of the meeting, so we have this on. Uh, and as it got closer, just because of a number of other things that I've had to deal with work-wise. Uh, there hasn't, you know, I I put in, I think, five hours on this on Tuesday, on on holiday. And I got the policies to where I sent them all to Wendy, I didn't send them to you all. Because they're not quite ready for, you know. All of that scrutiny, I wanna get them to where they're uh, that I feel like, I think they're in good shape. Finance department thinks they're in good shape, Wendy thinks they're in good shape, and then I wanna get them on the agenda for action, and. The reason I framed this request the way I did is, um, you know, if we don't do this. And then you're asked on the fourth to refer to hearing on the eighteenth. Then all of a sudden, you're having a public hearing about personnel policies a week before Christmas, which is not helpful, in my view, in terms of like. Staff morale, because even if on balance, some of the changes are are potentially very positive, depending on what the board votes, but like the vacation. Um, potential increase there, uh, it's still, it just inherently creates some amount of stress. And that creates some amount of, you know, foot traffic in my office, which throws me off all the other things I'm trying to get done every day, so.
I think that makes sense, the the only question I would ask is, um, if you're circulating something the board hasn't weighed in on. At the hearing, if the board wants to make a change, does it then need to be recirculated again to employees?
I mean, the way I would look at that is, if it's within the four corners of what was advertised, it's fine. Uh, that's how I would look at it, and that's based on, you know, kind of, that's how like a zoning bylaw public hearing is is considered, um. If if the notice provided fair notice to people, you know, interested parties. That this is generally what was gonna be talked about, that as long as changes are within the four corners of that, it's fine. This is a local construct, the personnel policy is a West Newbury policy, this is, you know, uh, and the hearing requirement comes from our own policy, it's not like a state law. Uh, obviously, we, you know, we treat it as the force of law, but, um, but it's not, um. I think if, you know, if let's say there was a proposal. Uh, you know, considered a hearing, and the board went in a totally different direction to where. People might have chosen not to come to the hearing or not provide comments, because they were, they didn't have comments, and now all of a sudden, there's a. Action taken that's different, that I would say you would wanna re-circulate the notice. I just wanna, one final kind of commentary, a little observation from when I started. The way this board was run in twenty eighteen, when I started, you would have a meeting where there'd be a discussion. On some topic, any topic, and there could be a board member who would say, well, I think we should have a policy that's such and such. And then board number B would say, well, I second. And they would say, well, let's refer that to here, and two weeks later, and and the former executive assistant, you know, would have to scramble. To put into writing what was stated at the meeting. That's kind of how this used to go, and that is part of why I think when. A notice goes out, like, it's just people are like, what's going on? So that's not how we do things, and, uh, you know, the notices, like I said, that that I provided are like, couldn't be more clear. Uh, but there's a history in this town, so I think this was, you know, this was put in. At a time, really to make sure that the board was not actually changing personnel policy without any notice to staff. So I think the way we've done it in the years I've been here is a hundred percent in the spirit of of the law, and a hundred percent better than it used to happen. But I I will say that like, there are some of these changes, I think, have festered, and I think need to be made. And uh, it it frustrates me that months and months go by, and it would be easier for someone watching, well, why don't they just do it? You know, you know, there's only twenty-four hours of the day, and uh, things that are not actively on fire. Sometimes get pushed ahead, and so despite, you know, a lot of hours going in on on some of these by a lot of, you know, a number of staff, including myself. Here we are, like, when I found the thing on the server, that was like, literally like from last March. And I was reading, I'm like, this is great, like, why didn't we just vote this? I'm like, oh, because we were in town meeting season, we had sixty articles and. You know, that's why, so.
Well, I think that's a good reason to do it like this, and just try.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I would love to have everything in front of you, but, um.
Are you guys comfortable with that as an approach?
Well, maybe. Because we'll be seeing at the same time, the employees are, it's a draft, right, because then a condo meeting is gonna be in place, so. I would suspect, I would not be prepared to vote it if that means, because I think then you have to go back and. Rethink it, I don't have a problem going forward, the process like this.
I'm happy to provide drafts to each of you individually, and meet with each of you individually, including before anything's advertised. In fact, I would welcome that. What I didn't wanna do is put something into a packet where it becomes something that's talked about in a public meeting. Because if it's not ready for prime time, and if it's not something that's that's supported, I would wanna know that before, so I'm. I'd be happy to send to each of you what I sent to Wendy, I just didn't want, I, well, I do wanna, I do, like I said in the memo, I do wanna give some time. Or maybe it was a transmittal email, I wanna make sure that Jenny and Caitlin have, can fully vet everything. Uh, I mean, there was, here's one example, there's, there was a draft policy that was uh, that uh was written, you know, a while ago. To do with use of vacation after there's notice provided of separation of service. With the intent to basically have more, uh, you know, have a clear policy on whether, for instance, someone could give their. Two weeks' notice and say, and by the way, I'm on vacation the next two weeks, because right now they can. And so there's a draft policy that basically says, you know, you can't use. Uh, accrued leave after giving your notice without like the specific approval. So that's, I think, a good policy. That's, you know, for instance, um, and there are things like that that are kind of, that have come up over the years that we've been administering personnel that. You might never think of, because you might think, well, gosh, no one would ever do that, well, there's a reason we've written these things, is things have happened that were like. Jeez, I wish we had a policy on that, so. You know, we do this brainstorming, you know, myself and Jenny and Caitlin, not all the time, because we're all really busy with our day jobs, but. But there's things that we we work on and we chip away at, and uh, I'd just like to get some things done before we get to the, you know, January, when it's gonna be all about budget.
Are you anticipating a vote at the December fourth meeting?
My my guess is you would probably view some of these as pretty straightforward housekeeping. So you could, you know, choose to vote some things and then keep it, you know, continue the hearing to December sixteenth and. Or even into January, if you felt it needed.
You and the town employees show up and have input that could impact what you present, that could be significant.
Yeah.
That's what sort of makes me flinch a little. Uh, it's going fast, I understand the reason for it, but I don't, you know.
Well, it's going fast from your standpoint, and I understand that.
I haven't seen anything, so to have it in a meeting in two weeks and voted is fast.
Well, it's not two weeks, it's uh, three weeks, but, but.
Also, what about Angus's idea of sharing the stuff ahead of time, is that helpful?
That's a good start, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, if if one or more of these fall off the table, that's fine, I do wanna get things on the table for discussion. Well, I'd like to get things on the table, whether they're voted or not. I can't really get board input, I can get individual members' input, but I can't get board input until it's on the table, and I can't put it on the table until it's put to a hearing, so it's. It's kind of like a paralysis, and and in the meantime, there are some some issues within here that that honestly, like. The work from home, I mean, Stephanie and Jenny and I started working that in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
It's been five years, and there's still no written policy, and um, I think that's, that creates a management challenge for me, that I. I think we will benefit by having, you know, a policy, whatever it ends up being.
So it's a big reason you're generally.
No, I haven't seen them, but I I think, I I think it's workable to.
Well, they're in your inbox, I'm not suggesting you look at them, but I sent you every everything Tuesday night that was.
Vacation on notice of separation?
Uh, I think that was attached to.
Okay.
It, well, it's funny, I'm not finding it in my sent now, I hit send on it, because I sent you like.
The the new ones.
Yeah, um, yeah, that was, let's see.
At any rate, if if we agree to to have the hearing on December third, if you're not comfortable on voting on something, we can delay to the next meeting. But at least it'll be on in the process, so we've got the hearing.
That's what I'm saying, I say, don't fully expect to vote unless it's for, I mean, that's gonna be a lot to digest, particularly if this.
So are you alright with that, Angus, if if.
Oh, totally, totally, yeah, I just wanna get things on the table, because we can't really talk about it till it's a hearing. And we can't advertise a hearing without the board knowing.
Well, I think that's a fine process, I just don't have an expectation on on the floor, if we sit there.
Totally fine, yeah, no, no, it's not that, it's more just like. Trying to clear the decks of at least some of these things before we get to January, just because it's, uh, uh. This will be my eighth cycle, and I can tell you from January second till the first of May. It's just, it's it's everything you see year-round, plus budget town meeting.
We're gonna see, we're gonna look at it from our perspective, and the employees are gonna have a really unique perspective, because they live this, and that's. That's where the change could occur, things that we, or me, had thought of, so, to sit there and wanna. You don't wanna debate it, argue, you wanna think about it, make sure it's the right choice.
Yeah, one one of the things that I've found is is been a real challenge in my entire tenure here is. When I started, you know, there was, for many years before I arrived here, there really was not any. Entity overseeing the town, the finance director was overseeing the finance department and assessing. Every other department had their own supervising entity, which might have been a department head, or it might have been a board. Uh, the only entity that at least theoretically was overseeing the entire town was the select board, but they weren't. Here every day administering the town, they were elected by a meeting every every two weeks. So some of the things that are in the personnel policies, you know, with with the turnover we've had. You know, hiring Stephanie and Jenny and just building out that finance department. We enforce the policies, not all of them are popular. We didn't write those, and there was a culture, when I got here in twenty eighteen, that people weren't, people weren't. Paying attention to the policies, so there are things that we required, because they were the policies that I think I got some negativity about, that I'm like. All I'm doing is administering the policy, so we've tried to fix the policies, we've made a number of clarifications of the. And we've, some of the things that were really brightly burning issues, like the the uh qualified part-time accrual rate, which was such a hot issue. My first, you know, year and a half or two, we we, we finally got that fixed, to where that's been a non-issue, because we we made it. Clear, we wrote it in a way that's clear, and everyone uh was happy with that, so it's just been interesting culturally, because, um. It's kind of like if you have, you can't really pick and choose, like, if you have policies, you should. They should be written in a way that actually matches how you're administering them, and in order to do that, especially in a very dynamic. Uh, time where, uh. You know, there's been, you know, amending the personnel policies was never. I was never directed to do that from the board that hired me or any subsequent board, this has been entirely. Me and my staff trying to get the policies to where they're actually reflecting how we administer personnel. Uh, I mean, here, you know, one example, the word time shoot does not exist in the personnel policy. There was a memo sent by the former finance director, Warren Sproll, in twenty twelve, sent to all staff. It's a two-page memo and it sets out a timesheet policy. When me and my staff became aware of that in twenty nineteen, and we just found it in a file, we're like, oh, jeez, this is pretty important, so we updated it and we recirculated, we've done that a couple of times. That's, and it spells out all the things about filling out a timesheet. That's not in the personnel policy, it's in a memo. To me, that's been an open issue for thirteen years. Um, so, so there's, there's some things that need attention. I mean, honestly, back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I was telling the board at that time, we really ought to engage a consultant and do a top-to-bottom review of the personnel policies. This never happens, uh, and I don't think that's on the cards. Um, and, you know, and more recently in twenty twenty one, it became the focus on the wage and classification, and that led to all the, you know, and that kind of took all of the oxygen out of the room. So the personnel policies have have festered. We have made some good changes over the years, but they've all been spot changes. Uh, even with what I'm working on now, it's still not a top-to-bottom review. I think there's all, you know, if me and my staff had, you know, significant time to focus on this, I think there's a lot of changes we would, we could make in the personnel policies, but in the meantime, we'd like to at least get some Band-Aids and uh, get some things in there that really need to be in there, like a, like a timesheet policy.
Yeah. So when you're ready to, when you send to employees, why don't you send to the entire board?
Oh, I would, I would, yeah. Well, no, I would wanna get it more advanced.
Look, you're not looking for input.
No, I would be, but from individuals, which is different than.
Why do that, though, if we've already agreed that we're gonna discuss it on December fourth? We don't need advance.
You know, but I think it's in, it's in my interest to have a smoother hearing, because if one, if even one of you gets back to me and says, I'm in no way for this, and, you know, I don't, I don't want.
You're gonna be embarrassed, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, like that's.
The chance of that happening.
Could happen, I mean, the very concept of work from home.
Also, I was anticipating three meetings with us, that adds three hours at least to your work week. Is that really necessary? If we're all gonna meet with it and we're not voting on that? Well, what if we only reach out to if we have a huge issue or we can't see voting or something?
Now, that was my hesitation to meet with Angus three times.
Yeah.
But I would say exactly what you just said, send it out to West.
Yeah. I'm not seeing it, my sent, I sent, it was like twelve thirty in the morning, about Tuesday night. And I sent it from my home laptop, and now it's not showing up in my sent mail, so.
I don't know, I don't have a force field over.
No, I know, it's weird, it's, I mean. Well, no, no, I sent it, there's no doubt about that, but it could be hung up in my outbox
Yeah.
of my Outlook on my laptop, because when I open Outlook here, it doesn't necessarily. I I sent it, there's no doubt, it may be hung up in my outbox, cuz it's not showing up. But yeah, I sent you all the working drafts, uh, just so you would know that I'm not just blowing smoke, like, there is actually of a lot of different issues, and uh, some of them, I think, are, in my opinion, a hundred percent there. That doesn't mean they'll be voted as is, but they're a hundred percent ready for a hearing.
Okay.
There are others that are more working drafts, and if those are ready by November twenty fourth, those would be put in circulation. If they're not, I would pull back on those, cuz I don't wanna put something out until me and Jenny and Caitlin were, and and Rebecca, I keep not mentioning her, but she's obviously my key support person on administration, so until the four of us are all like, yeah, this is ready for prime time, I don't wanna put it out there.
Okay.
Uh, I just want license to put out there what we, at a staff level, think is ready for, and and at a finance level, think is ready for prime time.
All right. So everybody, Ross, did you have something else to add?
No.
Okay, so.
So we'll vote the uncontested issues or try and vote the uncontested?
Well, it's up to you, yeah, you know, you just get into hearing and you never wanna presuppose the outcome.
Yeah, but if it's uncontested, then yeah.
Better, yeah, you you could vote singles that night and and continue other things to to a later date. And and uh, you could indefinitely postpone, you know, if there's certain issues that are just, you know, gonna need a lot more research or a lot more like, what, how do other towns do it, and things that are gonna implicate hours to research. We might lose six months and that might be fine, but if we can get some things done, that will, that would be good. And and a couple of these items are actually written into the FY twenty six, second half, uh, uh, like the remote work, that's, that's in the board work plan for January to June. I I'd rather I could get something, you know, at least before you sooner.
Yeah.
I'd be able to vote it, we'll see.
All right. Ready to move on? All right, Vince? October sixteen, any comments, fractions? Are you laughing now, guys?
Did you, did these go through you now, before they get published?
Okay, uh, let's see, you know what, actually, Amanda's made an important point. I think it would be good to get a vote, because on the hearing notice, it does have, you know, so I think if if we could take a vote, that would be good.
To refer.
Well, simply to author, I think I put it in writing to uh, with the board's authorization, a hearing notice would be posted timely for the December fourth meeting, with any proposed amendments circulated to staff for review, at least ten days ahead of time. So I think the vote would be to authorize the posting of a hearing notice with the materials uh, posted and circulated to staff at least ten days ahead of time. A hearing notice for December fourth with materials circulated ahead of time.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to post the hearing December fourth with the documents ten days in advance for personnel policies.
Thank you. Certainly.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, October sixteenth, Vince?
Make a motion to approve the message October fifteenth, what's presented, certainly.
Oh, dear.
All right.
I think about November third.
Next on that one, do you have many pages?
I don't have many. Uh, yeah, not many.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, November third?
That gonna change for just that, or? Make a motion to approve the message November third submitted.
Certainly. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. All right, discussion items, um, in recap of the town manager presentation, the new report at the committee. Uh, this presentation, I thought was, was really good. It's a good summation of of all pertinent material. Anything, any questions from, you know, you or?
People, I understand too.
Yeah, that's pretty staggering, what the capital projects backlog, you know?
And the uh, the difference in rates. I mean, is it easy to? What was the term there with? Or that complicated question, why, why are rates so much higher than surrounding towns? Was there an obvious reason for that?
Yeah, because we're paying new report there, commercial rates, plus we're paying for our entire water system, so it's like paying for two different water systems.
I guess, it's, you know, I think it's also um, the the Church and Prospect, I mean, that added a couple of bucks to the rate structure. Especially on the conservation, I think it added a dollar to the base, but it added.
Like two and a half or something?
More than doubled the conservation rate, so for the usage over thirty five thousand, I think the conservation rate was like sixteen something, and now it's like twenty, it, I don't even know if it was sixteen, it was only marginally higher, and they, they really went up. I think they went up ten dollars on the conservation rate, and that was really primarily driven by Church and Prospect. And uh, so one of the, you know, obvious concerns is in order to take on any further capital projects, if those are gonna necessitate the same type of, you know, if if you figure our water budget is is, you know, is one point three million a year, so let's say the debt service on a new capital project is, you know, a hundred grand a year, a hundred twenty, that's roughly ten percent above, you know, and we got a list this long of of water name replacements. So there was a comment made that a water commission meeting a couple of meetings ago by superintendent that like, oh, well, you know, we're not gonna do the one, next one for ten or fifteen years till we say, uh, Church of Prospect, and I'm thinking, well, first of all, it's not ten or fifteen years, it's thirty. It's not ten or fifteen, cuz it's that, it's not ten or fifteen, it's longer. And secondly, is that a viable option to simply not do anything? No, you need a business plan.
I mean, Church and Prospect are the tip of a massive iceberg.
Yeah.
Number two, that cost was reduced from the aqua flows too, if they had embodied that, the rate would be, this it's gonna get to the point we have a meeting with the water department, where where's the direction of this going within West Newbury, again, Newbury Board. Because they can't support this budget for much longer, they're gonna vote pretty soon.
Yeah, and and Newbury Board is very clear, cuz I've been to every one of these ad hoc meetings, um, it is very, very clear that um, their capital backlog is gonna necessitate major increases to their water rates, which is gonna flow through to our rate payers, so it's, it's really about as serious as can be. Um, and so I I hope that with all that's gone on and all that's going on, that we can get more people in the community to really, like Chris said earlier, in the commentary on the special town meeting article, uh, you know, people need to wake up to what's going on. And uh, have this, I think we'll have the same questions and concerns that that this board has and that I have.
I thought, I didn't realize this, that Newbury Court provides O and N to Newbury.
Yeah.
So.
Newbury is part of their system.
Yeah.
That would be a nice idea.
Yeah. So I think this is an excellent addition to our pile of uh, water related documents. Any other questions or points that we wanna?
I did attend their meeting yesterday, uh, this was from last Wednesday, a week ago, and uh, I appreciated giving, being given the invitation by the, by the chair of that committee to give this presentation, it may be reason to synthesize a lot of information, uh, which was good. Yesterday's meeting was not to do with uh, West Newbury, I attended, I didn't speak out, it was nothing really to do with with us, but it was very interesting, it was really primarily to do with the uh, uh, potential emergency interconnect between Newbury Court and Amesbury. And uh, that's at a stage of permitting, and that's something that they're working on for a while, but there is another related issue, and, you know, we're talking about this. I don't know if this will fit in on Monday or not, but uh, with regard to the dam project and the potential to increase the uh, under defensive measure, the uh, the lower arch of dam, so in the event of like a backbowl event or a, uh, you know, river overtopping event, and there's, in in a nutshell, there's two different configurations of how that could go. And there's pros and cons to both, and the town of West Newbury would have a very strong interest in that happening in one way, not the other. But that way would entail a lot of additional permitting risk. So I think these are the kinds of things, we need to figure out, how are we gonna get these on the table in a way that we as a community, not, not just through one department, but, you know, how can we have a seat at the table where we really have a multifaceted governmental structure between this office and the the Water Commission, uh, but that's something I've gotten a lot of new information just in the last couple of days. Including several sets of minutes of meetings in Newbury Court that that hadn't been previously available. It's just very clear, to see, you know, uh, almost decisions are being made, but processes are going forward that we need to be at table for.
Yeah.
And the only way we're gonna do that is if we have a cohesive uh, work between the two offices and, uh, and not just that, you know, conservation would be involved, certainly some of these and other offices with others, so hopefully Monday's meeting can be constructive in that regard.
Yeah. All right, the next item is just looking at meeting dates for the next two months. Any questions on these? Ross, do you have dates yet that we need to work around for January?
Right now, I don't have any, so, but this appears to me to could, yeah, event this war, something drastic changes next year.
What time is that meeting on Monday with the water commissions?
Uh, five thirty.
Wendy, did you notice the parking record is now Tuesday instead of Monday?
Yeah, like.
We go through all that to like try to.
But you responded to him and said we had another meeting, I mean.
Yeah, well, and and, you know, the normal way I would be at that meeting, and now I can't, because it conflicts with the school where.
Yeah. All right, so moving on to the next topic, uh, just on the Water Commissioners meeting on Monday, um, I had listed things that I wanted to cover, but I just, your input, um, I think I would just wanna start out with the statement I had in the email, just that in the event that the town is gonna be asked to contribute to water at some point, we as a board need to be confident that they're solidly, you know.
I shared the email, I missed myself.
Angus forwarded my email to the Board of Water Commissioners today.
Oh, just, yeah, but it was a week ago, just when we got the date.
Okay, I don't remember seeing it.
So anyway, just summarize.
It was just when I was at New York, you were available. Uh, it was basically the note, but I did not, no, it was from the.
At any rate, I just thought, I love wrong. Um, I do think we should talk about Church and Prospect, but I don't wanna get totally body found in details, I think we need to say what went wrong, how are you gonna fix it? I mean, what do you think?
Be a dead horse at this point, yeah.
Well, if there are positive changes that can be made, I would like to hear from them, what their plans.
I guess just to be more specific than that, so uh, on the day of special town meeting, Bob had brought by his list of six items, and he read that into the record at town meeting of the the policy changes that they committed to make. Uh, and that included, for instance, you know, full board signature of invoices over twenty thousand, there were a number of specific, specific things that were included in there. Um, I wanna make sure that it's made clear that the expectation is those are in fact adopted as policies, and that that punch list doesn't end up being I I, you know, I think that department needs to get more um, that stronger documentation. But those, that was something I think I emailed around to each of you on November third, uh, cuz it was dropped off in paper copy to me, and I scanned it, didn't send it around. Uh, we'll put together a little packet for for Monday night, but I was gonna include that. Uh, cuz that's something, I just wanna make sure that actually gets done and doesn't become like, you know, good.
Right, just lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, or some, you know, I I I don't think that document constitutes a policy, you know, there's gotta be like an adopting policy.
Uh, in terms of the IMA, what would you like to, like, next steps for that?
Well, the door is open.
So they need to designate somebody.
Yeah, they need to designate someone for a working group.
Yeah. And I know they planned to meet and talk about the positions from a few years ago, do you know if they did that?
Well, I went to their meeting a couple of meetings ago, and I had specifically asked them to review that, to basically either re-endorse it or to say if there were any changes. Um, you know, I was, I took a lot of notes at the meeting, uh, this was probably six weeks ago. My, my general recollection, which is fairly clear, is that they felt that March twenty twenty three document continued to represent an accurate outline of their positions. The only additional thing that uh, was stated was, you know, Bob was pretty strenuous about his idea that there ought to be efforts to see about amending the nineteen oh eight legislation that is, that gave the city rights to the town's water. And uh, you know, so whether that ends up, you know, and and actually, I alluded to that in my slide there to the report, that's where that came from.
Okay.
Uh.
So can you put that memo in the packet just for refresher, would you make sure?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would have loved to see them take a vote, I would love to see them put something in writing, but that is not the way they do things. So, but yeah, they did discuss it, and it was in front of them, and my takeaway was that they were generally in support. I'd love to see more things in writing, because it ends up being very squishy, and and if there is a disagreement, I would much rather we hash that ourselves, rather than that come up at a meeting with our counterparts in Newbury Court, which I think could be very embarrassing and counterproductive.
Okay. Uh, is it reasonable to ask them about the financial plan, or is that something?
I think it's very reasonable.
Okay.
I mean, I think this comment, I, you know, referenced earlier about, oh, we'll do that in ten or fifteen years.
Yeah.
I think there, that needs to be discussed, is that the position of the Water Commission?
Right, cuz it seems like from a asset standpoint, that would not.
No, then you're gonna have all of that happening at the same time, right? Everything's gonna fail at once.
Yeah, right, you're gonna start to feel like this, millions of dollars over fifteen years, you have twenty two million dollars worth of projects gonna be done. Uh, I don't think they understand the magnitude of it.
No.
I think if you did a rough financial plan and you looked at the project, you can realize it, it doesn't have the crashes, we've never reached very short.
Well, that's why I think we need a financial plan, I think the town needs it, and I think they need it, so they understand the magnitude. Um, I did wanna just update them on the status of our well exploration work, if that's all right with you, I know that. Like Jack Haley, the newest member, does not have any background in this, so I think that's a fair, so you discuss.
So, yeah.
Um and I I had had an item on here to just talk about what their maintenance processes, we've received a couple of complaints from residents, um. Apparently, the the most recent one is now on the agenda for next week, but I just think in terms of the process. They should have it formalized on the website, you know, guaranteeing that somebody with a concern will be heard at least. And it's not really fall, so. I would I would like to trace that as an issue, even though we have nothing to say about it, we get complaints, yeah, yeah. So anything else that I didn't list there that you wanna try to? Given that we have an hour and a half to pull this off.
Well, again, the big picture was where are you going, what's the direction, where do you? Do you see this as a viable? Program moving forward, and you know, I think if they thought about it for five minutes. They realize it's not, then you gotta think, what is the plan? Have suggestions, but that's a level of thing. They're gonna come to the reality that. It's unsustainable at this point. Especially if costs keep on up and users start dropping off.
Right, well, let's put a well in, if you could.
Which is just gonna aggravate. Well, same with the conservation rate, last time, I know there's a fine picket point, because if you put the conservation rate up so high. Users could either put a well in or stop using water at the same rate, and then you lose a significant amount of your income. So that's a. You can only push so far before the conservation rate. Impacts you negatively too. So, I mean, some of these people, I heard some of the numbers on the bills they use, I'd be putting a well in real quick, it's. Probably a four or five year payback, some of the bills these people have, yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Oh, I I I, what about the idea of the engineer?
Oh, pursuing?
Yeah, like, because they've said, and I I've been to all but one of their meetings for the last several months. And again, they don't take votes, and they don't like formalize things, but. If you read the room, it seems like they're all in agreement that they're not, they've not been well served by. Their current.
Oh, I thought you meant legal action.
No, 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 no.
Well, that, yeah, we can get to that, like, what that plan is.
Is there a path?
They said right in the town meeting. That they're done, so.
I don't like, let's, let's hear it again and.
And get them to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, just making sure there's an air there, because that's gonna involve preparing, you know, scope, doing a a big process, and. These are all things that, you know, I would personally like to to s- see whether the department can do those things, because those are things that are necessary to run a water department. And uh there's only so much bandwidth, first of all, me and my staff are not water experts. But even if we could do that capably, in terms of just spitting something out, just putting out a bit, it's not. You know, the indirect costs don't cover that level or better, and so. Uh you know, I I think it. We we need to see that that department, you know, what's it capable of?
Okay, uh item D is just a discussion on protocols for responding to resident concerns, so. So typically, like if I. Receive um concerns on the select board email address, I mean, I kinda decide whether to bring it to the board or not, it's usually under correspondence. And if we do that, what's the appropriate way to follow up, you know, is it an email, or I guess, you know, it's highly situational dependent, but. It's your thoughts, I just don't think you're gonna say something.
No, I'm just thinking, we talked about somebody wanting to catch you in town, and then they have another response, and it's, um you respond to a lot of these things, I don't think we even see them. Um I know the one you're referencing at hand, I don't know if we're gonna discuss it.
Well, I think we can, but I I do also just want us to think about what, how we wanna. Respond to resident concerns. If if a email comes to the select board address, and it's from somebody that's not in town, I generally, I mean, I wouldn't bring it to you, because I don't think.
But do you, I mean, for example, how many emails do you get in a month throughout, like, that need to be addressed?
Um I would say maybe. Fifteen.
That's a lot.
Yeah. So items that are substantive, either I'll board it or. For you, that's the worst part.
We don't see most of those.
Yeah. But a lot of times it's just following up, putting them to the right person, or with something I can answer, or answer it, but. Do you feel bereft that I'm not sharing all these images?
No, I feel bad for you. I mean, that's, that's so, just to read them and figure what to do with them, that's what I have to, that was mine to respond.
Alright, so on the email and question, so how do we handle it if it's not a, um if the person is not satisfied with the response and continues to press and? Any thoughts on that? Specifically, I mean. Tell me on here.
Well, I like, I mean. Talking about specific one, Ross, did he draft the response? Yeah, I was thrilled with this response, please. He did it, um a couple of editorial comments, and then a paragraph I think that needs to be added, but. Or he's taken initiative to do it.
I guess so, my question would be, if it's clear that the person complaining is not really interested in in being and having their concerns addressed. It's just, I would say harassment, do we engage with it? I mean, it's kind of similar, I think, to Facebook, would you, do we engage? And that, you know.
Without engaging, you haven't, um.
But we have engaged multiple times.
Maybe too politely. I think it's time to sit there and say, here's. The situation, this we're at.
Okay.
You know, and then after that, if it wants to go further, then it becomes a weaker issue. It's a good place to. Start on the golf, I think.
Is that what you were thinking, five?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's. Um definitely a fine line between giving it. Oxygen and. But I just, it was my own, um. Instinct that was telling me that he's interpreting. Um you know, our non-engagement as, you know, it's, it just seems to me like it's, it's gonna continue, and. It's not like his concerns or his discontent is reasonable. I mean, I guess it could be a little bit understandable, because the nature of his environment has changed a little bit, but. I just think it's basis, you know, like, it's found largely like misconceptions, you know, so to me, it's kinda like. Just uh. Tell him the truth, you know, tell him, yes, he's straight.
So Chris, you have revisions, maybe you wanna send those to Angus or fly with Ross and I. Yeah, okay, alright, I I didn't read it with the intent of editing, so we do that.
I just have that first team, yeah.
Maybe you want me to incorporate?
If you would mind, and then I'll send you my comments, and you can, and then maybe have a draft in the next.
Maybe redline a paragraph I put in, so she understands that's my comments, so, cuz she likes to slash my comments.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then, so is this an agenda item, Angus, I guess it is.
Well, this is part of kinda how I wrestle with this, I mean, you know, I I feel like when things come in that that are kind of merit or responses, either, you know, the chair. And it really, I think it's the chair's discretion, which which is gonna mean over the years, and as there's different chairs. Stylistically, things could be handled very differently, and that's why I think it is important for the board to to. As a board, decide how you want things handled, do you want things handled by the chair, do you want things? Brought to the board, uh if they rise to a certain level, and if you do. Do you wanna have the specific language in front of you at a meeting, because once you do that, that's a public document. So if you, uh or do you want something where the the board as a board conveys an intent? Perhaps that that uh you know, designates a member to to do the drafting, send the draft, and then staff compile comments, um. Cuz I think the, you know, that's the, on- once you're reviewing a draft letter in a public meeting, that's. Even if that's not the letter you send, that's a public document too, so uh that's where I think, um. You know, even just, it it's kind of like getting ahead of where the board is, because the board as a board hasn't hasn't acted on on a letter, uh so.
So what would you recommend?
Well, so I think if, I think uh. If uh. You know, I mean, I would say if if I could take the. Chris's markup. Build it in, send it to each of you, you send each of your comments back to me, you know, we then like. Words, but if there's some difference of substance, then, you know, I think we'd work with the chair to to get it final form, but there is that balance of like. Making sure whatever's sent is really the w- will of the board. Uh and I think if if you felt there was something you didn't want voted, you could certainly do that. Uh and if there is something that may lead to, you know, there might be some future litigious. Issue, it might well be worth having the board actually vote a specific document. Um but I think it's it's a little dicey when you get like drafts in circulation, cuz it's uh.
Yeah.
You know, the. I mean, there was a letter this board sent to this resident on this issue, I think, three or four years ago. That uh. It was specifically voted by the board, and I know it was, it was uh. Put through a bit of a filter to be as as nice as possible, and unfortunately, it hasn't been met. You know, reciprocally, um but over the years, the board really has has, I mean, I've seen it with this board and prior boards, it's really tried to be as as neighborly as as possible in this situation, and. It's not met that way.
So, um. Maybe it's. Important to think, like, what is our intent with this letter, it's not gonna change, you know, he's not gonna say, oh, now I get it, right? So what is our intent in sending this, is to just?
Give it to our position and not bully it around. Maybe he doesn't have clarity on certain issues. Well, it's the paragraph I put in, hoping to add a little clarity.
Okay. Alright, so, um. You're gonna take care of that, Angus?
Uh yeah, we'll build in these uh these changes and get them in circulation, and then if it looks like it's ready to go. Um you know, I think that you could sign as chair, or the whole board could sign, yeah, that would, I think that's good, yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Great, um so any questions on correspondence items? If you can update?
Yeah. That that page, the one I thought was curious. Uh the clean energy facility to move over, they talked about the battery, energy storage system, so I assume that's why the A G is taking so long to approve, I think.
That is some.
Try it, I'll, okay. Like, okay, there it is, finally, the the light went on.
Yeah.
We were having to hurt.
Exactly.
Time to slow down. And again, talks about uh final regulations March of twenty six, so they're probably gonna ask for another extension on our, so.
We'll see. Uh Wendy, when the request came in, you know, Tim, it comes in through council, Tim sent it to me, and and I said, yeah, go ahead. If we're requested another extension, uh I'll make you guys aware, because I don't think we have to consent to that. If we don't consent to that, maybe they strike down the bylaw, so when we got the perk, when I was like, yeah, that's fine, another ninety days, that's, you know.
So what is the alternative, they just say no?
Right, they could do that.
I think you play nice as long as you can.
Yeah, 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 I don't think this, you know, I don't think this, the the town's harmed in any way by. Not having the approval, it does create some. Question is, yeah, I think it holds back, like posting the updated bylaw, when you have one that was voted but isn't formally approved, it does create like a.
Yeah.
Little bit of an administrative headache there, um.
Um on the second item, is this something that's gonna come to us for a vote, or um? This organization membership?
Uh I don't, personally, I don't think we need to be doing it, I wanted to make you aware. Uh but I think with our cyber coverage and with what we're doing, uh. This came from the the, put your title on the the agenda, uh the. Maps opposite me, this small steel technology, uh you know, we've uh. You know, I've been, we've been in trainings, in fact, in the last month, I was part of a table pop exercise at M V P C with with this individual. So I think we're, you know, I think as a small town, I think we're doing the things we need to be doing. Uh I think if this is something we want to. Learn more about, um to see if it's something we wanted to budget for for next year. That would be good, I know fifteen hundred dollars doesn't seem like a a huge amount of money, but it. We don't carry that kind of contingency, I mean, we could find the money, but if we would have to trade off, you know, there would be some other things that we did budget for, we would. Uh you know, this wouldn't be, or we needed a line item transfer, which is the end of the world, it's not a huge amount of money, it's more just, is it, um. You know, I I think that I wanted to share it, why I do think that's also part of what triggered in putting the earlier item on is just to. You know, put you somewhat at ease that we are mindful of cybersecurity and doing of, you know. What we can on that. So, but if if any of you thought this is something we should really look at formally opting into, um you know, we could talk about that.
Okay, uh last item is future agenda items, um. So you will notice the agenda was shorter this week. So I have about fifteen items, you guys, that were not on there. That I just wanna run through to say, is this something that should be on agenda, and if yes, when? Just so you can have some input, um. Uh first one is um an issue with an easement on the um. Adjacent to the town hall, and ACTA, they're asking for us to kind of weigh in on that, um. Any?
Something along with the neighbor and the drive and all that stuff.
Yeah, so I think we tentatively told them the next, you know.
But it's actually a separate easement from the one on the town hall.
Right, but it's that.
Oh, nice.
But it all ties together, the board does it.
Right, so, so I was just making you aware of that, and we have been asked to um consider ACTA's request, so.
And Wendy and I did meet with with ACTA last week to review this.
Yeah, and I met with the neighbors who would be. Who feel they're being impacted, but, so.
This is. How do you even assess when you hear?
Yeah, so I'm just, I so I guess really what I'm doing is making aware, there's a bunch of things that I took off the agenda, but they're not coming.
They don't run back on them.
Another one is, I don't know if you recall, West Newbury uh riding and driving club, they had an agreement from nineteen eighty five that they were, so we do have an opinion from our house. Yeah, so maybe we'll put that on the same agenda, um. Uh let's see. De-scheduled by law, we already mentioned that, as as long as, as well as the special permit, um. River Bend proposal, I mean, was that, oh, the well drilling. Uh River Bend, maybe we can talk about that on Monday with the Board of Water Commissioners. I have a proposal from the um consulting engineer, so. You know what on that? Um Mill Pond, I mean, Angus mentioned this, the the dock, um that is a. Issue that's a lot, that's gonna be permitting, so the select board will have to get involved with that.
The stuff in the dock piece said it down there.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Uh one kind of. So. I would like to, I guess, draft a policy on how the town responds to e3s from Greenbelt or other private land trusts, um like who they should contact, and what committees should be involved right right now. It's very gray. In the last few years, um they have gone to Angus, and he's coordinated um meetings about it. But historically, they've gone right to open space committee, and there's, like, the select board is not even really in the loop until they decide that's a good purchase, and then they come to select board, and. They they don't have the full picture of everything that's going on in town, so I know that that's the way we might continue doing things. So I'm meeting with the open space committee next week, I think I will propose a select board policy on how to manage that.
That's a very good idea.
Okay. Um another open space issue, um the new trail markers at Bray Hill, there's also a trail map sign that goes with them. The person that did that map is not willing to share the files, so that the town can change it as needed, so that's another topic that. Um it may be that we have to create our own maps, so we have control over them. Um police hiring, hopefully that'll be on the next agenda. He's not gonna be hiring anybody.
To consult.
Well, also, just do we wanna say nobody that hasn't completed the academy, you know? Do you know where he stands with hiring, I mean, I'm assuming it's been posted and.
With the, with which?
Police.
About which position?
I thought it was an open um full-time position.
Uh. I don't know where that stands, I know, yeah, I've been focused on the admin iron, but I'm not sure.
Um the solid waste and hauling contracts, that's another thing.
I was gonna ask for that in a minute, but okay.
Um one thing I don't, maybe once a month, we should just talk about the town work plan and the general status of how we're doing, are we holding the line on immediate projects? Or are things getting squishy?
Yes.
But, uh. Well, I mean, if I was just visiting, you know, I don't know, maybe once a month, this is pretty much, but, um. And then a a question came up this week for me, um if CPC approves an application for a project, are they bound by our town work plan, I mean. I mean, can they just add projects that we then have to designate, um, staff to? So, it's just something to think about. Uh, MVP grant, I mean, maybe we need to circle back on that and see where we're at with that.
Let's say that's a priority one.
And then, I mean, this, I don't know what the solution is, but I just feel like staff and s- specifically Angus are just drowning in work. And we as a board, I think, need to do something to try to manage what's happening. And I don't know what the solution is, but I feel like it's at a breaking point, so, um, so I guess that ties in with the town. So, those are all my items that I think we need to, um, touch on at some point. So, any ideas on how to spread that out so we don't have super long agendas or? Pick out two or three for each meeting? Chris?
Yeah, um, and again, we have to prioritize the ones that can, you know, some people have personal preferences on, but I think the, the component of staff and Angus drowning in work and the town work plan go hand in hand. And that's why when you said the MVP grant, um, I think those are the three we should be looking at at the next meeting. And, and my personal thing, and we'll have to discuss with me cuz it's not a discussion tonight, is suppose, the grant's gonna consume such an amount of time, that still scares the heck out of me. One other issue that pushes off the table, so how, how we get through that is gonna be an interesting discussion.
Maybe we could talk about, um, just like the, the library, but the, the plans and studies for the next six months. Like I, I mentioned, if we can block out when they're supposed to happen, they're all supposed to happen in February, that's gonna be a huge problem, you know?
It can't, we know that, yeah.
Well, but, yeah.
They can't, it's not physically possible.
Yeah.
That's all another topic. What else?
So, I think, um, Chief Wyers is scheduled to be on the next agenda. Angus, can you say that?
Uh, I know he was not available for tonight, you know, or for the last meeting. I, I didn't talk to him specifically about the fourth. Rebecca may have, they've been spending a fair amount of time together cuz she's been participating in the interviews for the admin position. So, she may have said December fourth specifically. I have not had that conversation with them.
Alright. Oh, one I skipped over is the special employee designation that we talked about last time. Do we wanna have that back on? I mean, I don't see the urgency for that, but, um.
Did we get an information?
Yeah, Donna sent, uh, some information, so if we wanna have it on an agenda, we can share that.
Yeah, if you just wanna look at with regard to the here and compete, that could have been on for tonight. Uh, the broader piece that I had mentioned at the last meeting of that there's a history on this and there's prior designations, prior boards that may going back to the nineties, that's something that's gonna take me and my staff a couple of hours to prepare for. So, that's why it's not on tonight. If you're just looking at here and compete in isolation, that's fine.
Well, I don't even know if we're ready. I, I mean, the reaction was pretty lukewarm from you guys, right?
For me, yeah.
Yeah, I think Ross was a new agreement, right, that?
You know, see, from their perspective, it's a big issue to come to us once a year and say, hey.
Yeah, alright, so then I'll just be in the back burner unless it becomes an issue and get free access.
Back burns.
Yeah, alright, any other of those things that you wanna have on sooner rather than later? Sounds like it's mostly work plan issues.
Yeah, I, again.
Or did you have other ones that I didn't say?
Yeah, but they really, we can just, just real simple tonight, saw Millbrook sign. There's supposed to be a sign near the parking area. Wasn't there gonna be, didn't we approve a design list? I thought it was up, it's not.
Yeah, it was up and then it was taken down because there was a complaint by the Concom Chair that it included a trail that was not formally approved.
Love this stuff.
Yep, nothing's ever done, Chris. We do it and then we have to do it again.
Yeah, okay, what else is?
I'd like to have the, the sketch for something, Diana, come in.
Wait, what? Nothing's ever done? Or it's done over?
Does the Concom Chair have the right to direct that to be taken down?
It's the property's something they're caring about.
I know, but still.
Well, I think it's appropriate. I mean, the trails did not go through the, the new trail checklist they, they established. So, I, I don't fault for that.
Okay, um, just a question, November eighteen, you asked me to go to the next Board of Health meeting with the issue on trash.
It's not on their next agenda.
Paul's already told me it is.
I looked at the agenda today, it's, uh.
Yeah, I'll be on the eighteen.
Uh, no, it's not, I'll pull up the agenda right now, but I, I, uh.
I've been told they're getting ready to put it out to bid.
Can they do that on the road about this?
So, I want, I just need to know what direction I have to have on this. I don't wanna be in line.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I just looked at their agenda yesterday, it seemed to me about solid waste. There's nothing on their agenda for Tuesday about solid waste. They talked about it at, at a meeting a month or six weeks ago, prior to the board's discussion, but no, it's not on next week's agenda cuz I, I have to send them a memo, uh, which again, it's like, it's on my list, uh.
I'll show up anyways, just in case it pops up.
Well, it shouldn't pop up, it's not on the agenda, but, but I was gonna not send a memo till after Tuesday cuz I don't wanna scare something up when they already have a posted agenda and. But it's, it's just a matter of I need to take the memo that I wrote to you, reframe it, make sure it's written in such a way that emphasizes that they need to be closely involved in scoping and in that procurement process. Um, so, so it's a matter of, the word spent is probably, you know, thirty or forty minutes of work to write it and then once I send it, it will, okay, hours of my time within minutes of me getting sent. And that's part of why.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, though, you said, right?
It's not on their agenda for Tuesday, so I, I said I'm gonna send it after Tuesday. I don't have time between now and Tuesday to deal with it, frankly.
Alright, so you wanna play open meeting, like, please, if they bring it up? Chris?
I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, tell them it's not agenda, you should be, no, well, I don't know.
We'll go to the meeting, I'll say that.
Alright, I think generally I'll focus on these kind of open space.
I mean, I could certainly write them a memo Monday.
If it's not on the agenda.
It's just, it's, uh, it's gonna.
Let it go. I think maybe later in December, some of these open space issues and, uh, anything you'd like to have on the agenda, Ross? No, I think it's enough. Alright.
The offer.
Did you, uh, give Tim heads up?
I did, yeah, I, uh, he, well, he told me after about seven forty-five, we're at seven forty-eight right now, so. Uh, I had emailed him before the meeting with the link and I told him, I'd let him know when we were kind of close. But I, I didn't text him yet, cuz it's only.
Yeah, I think we're, we're wrapping up here, so. I moved to, uh, recess to executive session, uh, for MGL chapter for the A's, question twenty-one A two and twenty-one A three.
So, you can do.
All favor? Be done?
Well, I, definitely, boy.
So, we could start with the second items, if you wanna. Have a head some.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be good. Alright, so the board has, uh, voted to recess to executive session. They will return to open session, uh, later this evening for the sole purpose of adjournment. Good night.